Good evening and welcome to the April 27th meeting of the Board of Selectmen. And I ask that you please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, let me say that the room looks exactly the same and the faces haven't changed at all, so it's nice to be back. We're going to start with some proclamations tonight, and the first one is for Eagle Scout, Kenneth J. Weber of Boy Scout Troop 40, and Selectman Patterson is going to present that proclamation.
And I must say, it's a particular pleasure for me to present this one because Ken, KJ as he was called, was one of my scouts, and we've done a lot of backpacking and hiking together, and he's quite a remarkable young man with many, many talents. So, with that preface, whereas Kenneth J. Weber of Boy Scout Troop 40, St. Barnabas Church, has successfully completed qualifications for the rank of Eagle Scout, a rigorous and demanding process that teaches patience, perseverance, and teamwork, and requires strong goal-setting, and Kenneth J. Weber met these challenges with aplomb and shall be recognized as an outstanding representative of his family, his troop, and his community; and whereas the Boy Scouts of America, long acknowledged for building fine citizens, calls for special Court of Honor to award its highest symbol of achievement to those who complete this rank; and whereas Kenneth J. Weber is now an Eagle Scout with all its rank and privileges, now therefore we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby declare and proclaim Saturday, May 2nd, 2015, as Kenneth J. Weber Day. In witness thereof, we hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of Falmouth to be affixed.
So move.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The next proclamation is Police Week from May 10th to 16th, 2015. I'll duck.
Proclamation for Police Week. Whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls Police Week; and whereas the members of the law enforcement agency of the Town of Falmouth play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of the Town of Falmouth; and whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problems, duties, and responsibilities of their police department, that the members of our police department recognize their duty to serve this people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak, against oppression or intimidation; and whereas the Police Department of the Town of Falmouth has grown to be a modern and scientific law enforcement agency which unceasingly provides a vital public service, therefore we, the Board of Selectmen, call upon all citizens of the Town of Falmouth and upon all patriotic, civil, and educational organizations to observe the week of May 10th to 16th, 2015, as Police Week, with appropriate ceremonies in which all of our people may join in commemorating police officers past and present, who by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities have rendered a dedicated service to their communities, and in doing so have established for themselves an enviable and enduring reputation for preserving the rights and security of all citizens. Further, we call upon all citizens of the Town of Falmouth to observe May 13th, 2015, as Peace Officers Memorial Day in honor of those police officers who through their courageous deeds have lost their lives or become disabled in the performance of duty, especially our own Officer Samuel F. Pierce, who lost his life in the line of duty on August 16th, 1933. We further call upon all citizens of the Town of Falmouth to observe a moment of silence on Wednesday, May 13th, 2015, in their honor. In witness whereof, we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be fixed.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And the last proclamation is for Arbor Day, April 30th, 2015. Selectman Moffett?
Whereas the Town of Falmouth benefits from the graceful canopy of tree limbs that shade us from the blazing summer sun, purify our air contaminants, provide a peaceful respite from the ordinary world, and generally beautify our community; and whereas the town has been recognized by a national program and is known far and wide as Tree City; and whereas the Falmouth Tree Warden, Falmouth Garden Club, Falmouth Public Schools, and Falmouth Beautification Council recognizes the value of the beautiful trees in Falmouth by organizing a day to celebrate the purity and the strength exemplified by the trees and all living and green things; thereby honor the trees of Falmouth by singing songs, sharing thoughts, and teaching more about the value of our trees; and now, therefore we, Mary Pat Flynn, Doug Jones, Rebecca Moffett, Susan Moran, and Samuel Patterson, as Selectmen of the Town of Falmouth, do hereby proclaim Thursday, April 30th, 2015, as Arbor Day. In witness whereof, we have hereon to set our hand and cause the great seal of the Town of Falmouth to be affixed.
So move.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. Okay, and next is announcements. I have no announcements tonight, but does anyone else have an announcement to make? No, Town Manager?
No, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to a public comment. Anyone who wishes to speak on any item that is not on the agenda tonight, please ask to be recognized. Yes, Mr. Cook? If you come to go to the podium, please. Yeah. And state your name for the record.
Good evening. My name is Alden Cook. I would like to request that the subject of the Combined Dispatch Center for the Town of Falmouth be scheduled for the next regularly scheduled Selectmen's meeting, so that the citizens may know what progress is being made on this issue. I would also like to volunteer my services to the town voluntarily, without cost, to aid in this project in any way that may be seen fit.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Mr. Fineran?
Good evening. Mark Fineran, Precinct 6. I'd just like to remind people that there's an election coming up, May 19th, and for those of you who don't vote for whatever reason, I urge you to vote. If you haven't registered to vote, you may do so up until Wednesday, this Wednesday. And for those of you who work, in order to facilitate this process, the wonderful woman that works at the Clerk's Office will stay open till 8 o'clock on Wednesday night. And I urge you all to register if you're not, and to vote on May 19th. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fineran. Is there anyone else who cares to make a comment? I finished writing my name. We will move on to the minutes of the meeting of April 6th, 2015, the public session.
I would move approval of the minutes of April 6th, 2015.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor -- oh, Mr. Patterson?
Yes, I think there's actually maybe one, just easy correction that might be made. Actually, it's in two different places, on page three. Oh, three-quarters of the way down, it refers to Catherine Lee Bates School. I think that should be the road. And the next page is the same thing on page four, at the end of the first set of bullets.
Okay.
And one other, I guess, on page five, since there may be some confusion as to who Mr. Murphy is, I would specify that to be Mr. Patrick Murphy, School Finance and Facilities Director. Just as a clarification for future readers.
I think that's very helpful. Yeah, thank you. You have those questions. Okay. So, a motion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
You just moved?
I just wanted to commend Denise's excellent work on these, as she's adapting to the way our meetings go.
That's Jennifer.
I mean Jennifer.
If that's acceptable to everyone, just.
Okay.
Do you want to amend your motion to approve the changes?
Yes. No. The motion is to approve the minutes as amended.
As amended. And there's a second to that. Okay.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. The next set of minutes are for March 30th, 2015, and April 6th, 2015, and they are both executive session minutes. Oh, sorry. I had to abstain from those minutes. Could you please correct the vote? Four in favor and one abstention. I wasn't there. March 30th, 2015, and April 6th, 2015, executive session.
Madam Chair, we are still working on those executive session minutes from March 30th. If the Board would so allow, that's -- there are few adjustments yet to come. If the Board would allow us to carry that to your next meeting.
I would move approval of the April 6th executive session minutes and vote to release them. Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And abstain. And the next minutes, that's it. And the executive session we're going to -- that will be held.
Madam Chair, would you like me to read the licenses and administrative orders?
Yes, if you would. We're under the summary of action, and the first category is licenses? Yes, please.
Just to protect your voice.
Thank you.
Under licenses, the first we have is to approve requests for a special agricultural event liquor license. This is for the Westport Rivers Vineyard and Winery with Falmouth Farmers Market on May 21st, 2015, to October 8th, 2015, on Thursdays. And do we have anyone from this organization or from the next one, the Coastal Vineyards here tonight? The only comment I did have is I did receive concern about making sure that there are two sections of the licensing law that must be followed. One, of course, is that the amount of sampling must, as it says on the license, be under an ounce and no more than five at the place. The second is to make sure that the vehicles that are used to transport them are officially permitted, but I think those are both regulations that follow within the rules that are given by the ABCC, so I don't think anything additional we need to put forward for that.
Move approval of those two licenses.
Okay, so this is for both the Westport Rivers Vineyard and for the Coastal Vineyards?
That's correct.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second?
A second. You've been doing it too long. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous.
And third license is to a special one-day liquor license of Falmouth Theater Guild and Highfield Theater on May 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 8th, 9th, 10th, 15th, 16th, and 17th, 2015.
Move approval of the liquor license for the Falmouth Theater Guild on those dates.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous. And then we move to administrative orders.
The first is to approve the opening of a shellfish area for Youth Shellfish Day in Bournes Pond, July 22nd, 2015. We did announce this a while ago that we were going to take this up.
Do you want me to say hold now?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, just indicate a hold if you want, and we'll come back and take it on the second round. This is the shellfish area. It will be a hold.
The second is to vote to accept the Cape Cod Municipal Health Group Wellness Grant Check in the amount of $600 to the Personnel Department Donation Account. The third is to approve payment from the Beach Department Donation Account for intelligent products for the mud mitts in the amount of $823.52. The fourth is to grant final cost to the Board of Assessors for the Assumet Valley Project, Austin Stokes Drive, Redlands Road, Regis Road, and Shepherd Place.
Hold.
Fifth is to vote to accept the donation of a backstop for Central Park in Falmouth Heights for the Cape Codgers. Sixth is to authorize the Town Manager to spend up to $12,500 to be expended from Article 17, April 2011, Town Meeting to pay a portion of the Little Pond dredging costs. Seven is to approve the installation of monitoring wells on the town roads and properties part of Phase 2 of the hydraulic investigation of the Acapescot Peninsula. Eight is to approve requests for the revocable license on the Bike Way 226 Oyster Pond Road. I have a hold on that one. Nine is to approve the room tax petition. Ten is to approve the N-Star petition to install one 4-inch conduit and one handhole at 15 Brockton Street.
Can we do a hold number on the N-Star request?
On all three of them?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
All three?
Yeah, so there's also a 10 Nashouina Street.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And conduit and handhole at Whitman Road.
So let's go back to Item 1, which is the opening of the shellfish area for the Youth Shellfish Day in Bournes Pond. Miss Fineran Moffett, you held that.
Is there anyone here from that group? That's why I held it. I wanted a little explanation about it. Well, I don't know what to say on that.
Heather?
Yes, okay.
It's something that's generally sponsored with the support and implementation by the Marine and Environmental Services Department. Chuck Martenson, the Shellfish Warden, helps make that happen every year.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, did I move approval of the shellfish area? Let's see, I guess.
I think instead of taking these one by one, after we go through each --
So hold.
Yeah, after we go through everything, we can vote them all at once.
Sounds good to me.
Rather than individually. Okay, so the next one is Item 4, the final cost to the Board of Assessors. I held that. And the reason I held it is because each time, and it is not very often that it happens, that the Board of Selectmen has to vote a betterment. The construction costs that are determined -- that are presented to us and presented to the neighbors is usually the high-end cost, because if the law says that if, whatever the cost is, say it was $150,000, and when the cost came in, they were $160,000, because they were above what was estimated, then the town is responsible to pay the difference. So we always are very, very careful, our engineering department is, when they do those assessments. And in this case, the estimate was, I think, higher than that, and I'm not sure exactly. Do we have a number?
I think I do have that, Madam Chair. From Town Engineer Peter McConerty, the projected construction costs were $1,369,741.81, and the total construction costs were actually $787,769.11. So as you've noted, once again, the actual costs were considerably below the original estimate due to efficiencies that our Public Works Department was able to enact to the great benefit of the property owners affected.
Right, and that's why I bring this up and hold it and mention it, is because we let the neighbors know that the actual cost will be much less than the estimate, but sometimes we never really tell them what the actual costs are, and I think it's important to do that. So I want them to realize that the costs are much less than the original.
Isn't the project usually based on what would cost if we had to go out to a private contractor?
It's a different price.
And is the top-level cost of what it's going to be, even though we know the town may be able to do it for less money than that, right?
Right. Okay, so the next.
Madam Chair, I think Heather made that comment.
Oh, Heather, go ahead.
That was my comment, that the reduced cost isn't just efficiency, it's using forced labor, towns' resources, to implement the project, and that brings the overall cost down.
Great, thank you. Yes.
I think it should be noted that the cost is almost $600,000 less, which really makes a difference in each betterment per property when it's $600,000.
That's right. Okay, so Item 8 was held, approve the request for the revocable license at the Bike Way at 226 Oyster Pond Road.
Yeah, do we have anyone on the applicant for this one? This is Tom Bunker.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for hearing this. I'm Tom Bunker with BSS Design. We've drawn these plans for John and Renee Adams. Terry Sores from Sores Landscaping is here also. She'll be doing the construction, can answer any particular questions. It seems like this is the first time anybody along the Bike Way has asked for such a license. And what they want to do is, they happen to own property, this is Oyster Pond Road here, houses on one side, the bike path basically cuts the property, they own this parcel land down here, down to Vineyard Sound. It's a fairly steep bank, it's about six feet high on this side, and then it goes back up again, four feet high on this side. There is a path going down and back up now, which is quite dangerous for them. It's not a public path. What they want to do is just install some fairly rustic-looking stones, so they just can have safe passage down one side and back up the other to get to the other side of the road, so to speak. Talked with, it's just a little blow-up there, I've talked with Pete McConerty and also the Bike Ways Committee. I think there should be a memorandum in there that you have no closer than six feet to the pavement. It was staked out there, so it could be viewed. There'll be a handrail on one side, just for safety purposes, and that's basically what we're asking for, is just permission to put some steps. There's no concrete involved, it's dry-laid on, you know, stone dust, just some simple steps up and down and back up the other side.
My question had to do with the private or the no-public-access sign that was being suggested. When, if anything, I was actually thinking, if we're going to allow this to be happening on town property or running town property, is there any -- shouldn't public access be allowed? And I'm trying to remember exactly what the law is about providing public access from town property to?
To private property?
Well, to the water side. I mean, we do have open access to the shore in this town, and some people have to provide it, and.
There is further to the north and east, there's many public access from the Bike Path to the water, maybe not right along there.
I guess it's a regulation, I just don't remember well enough about what the requirements are for providing public access to, I know certainly there are many places all around Falmouth that have to allow people to go across their road to make sure that we're not cutting off public access to it.
Yeah, there's nothing being cut off here. I think that, I think that Peter and the Bike Ways Committee didn't want public access so that people, so more people than necessary wouldn't be going up and down these steps, which if more people cross or go in and out, then it could create a hazard for the bicycles. So I think that's.
I think our Town Council actually reviewed this and determined whether or not the license of the, the license of the homeowner who wanted to have that section of passable ground there to the Bike Path would be able to do that. And I think the question from, Doug is frank, why is a town allowing an individual person to do this? And if so, would not that, that make it then a public way so that other people could use it as well? If you would.
Could I, I mean, as it's coming up, could I just respond? I mean, they already walk across the Bike Path. The Bike Path is public property.
Yeah, well, we're asking the question now of Council, Tom, I think.
Evening, Madam Chairman. Very good to see you back here.
Thank you.
As you know, I was asked to come to this meeting, but not for this matter. So first I heard that question was sitting over there in that chair. Yes, I did recommend to the Board that a license was appropriate. The question that Mr. Jones has raised about whether or not there's a requirement that there be public access to the water from this point is one that I can certainly answer for you, but I don't feel comfortable doing it on the top of my head, standing here with 30 seconds of notice. So with that said, I can certainly advise you through the Town Manager perhaps by next week.
Madam Chair, could I make one comment? Just a, having traveled the Bike Path on multiple occasions, I just think it would be helpful to confirm that this is only one of multiple properties that have accesses across the Bike, the Bike Way. The difference here, to the best of my knowledge, is that the property owners are asking to make modest improvements to the steps or the path that goes on either side of the Bike Way, but it really does not change the fact that, you know, the relationship of their property to the Bike Way, nor the circumstances that are replicated on many other properties as you travel in both directions on the Bike Path. This merely will add a more attractive set of steps than the steps or paths that appear in many other locations, and I just wanted to note that, you know, generally for the record.
Well, it seems fair to say that the improvements that are being made are on the homeowner's property. They're not being, no?
No.
They're also being made.
That's the reason for the license. These improvements or the steps have to be, they have to use part of the town right-of-way. Now, I have not, that's why you are involved. If we were totally on their property, they wouldn't be here.
But from looking at that, I understand.
I have not done a title to this property, but it, from just familiarity with the area, I believe that these properties ran from the road to the beach at one time when they were, then severed when the railroad went through and took it by right-of imminent domain. So now they have parcel on either side of the right-of-way, and they're trying to get from one side to the other, but they do need to use a portion of the town right-of-way to build the steps to do so to get over those banks. That's the reason. And I will, I will look into the question that Mr. Jones raised, and I'll get back to you.
Sam, and then Becky.
I know that time is of the essence, because they'd like to get this done, you know, before the summer traffic really builds. And I think, so the question really is the signs that state that this is private property not to be crossed. not to be crossed, and I was wondering whether we could at least allow them to move on with the steps, and then say, you can have the one sign preventing people from going up to the property where the house is, the residence is, but you have to hold off on the one going down to the beach until our town council has a chance to review to see whether that's allowed. But isn't that really the issue here? Is where, you know, what the sign will do to restrict public access, and whether they have the right to restrict it down to the beach side, certainly they do to the residential side of the property. So, and I would ask, since I've got the floor here, I didn't see anywhere, Tom, on your diagram there, where those signs will be placed, since it, our council has advised us that they has to be on private, the private property.
As far as the signs, this memorandum came, came from Peter after we did these plans. I haven't revised the plans, I mean, if we are required to put up signs, I suppose it might be at the, I don't know, it'd be at the top of the stairs, just to, sort of be out of the way of, you know, of any bicycle traffic. You know, I don't know, I guess that'd have to be up to you.
And right now, there's a locked chain across the walkway that's a little bit further to the south.
Right. And I think frankly, the Conservation Commission, we've been through, for steps down to the beach, Conservation Commission has said that they do want a gate, because they don't want more people going to the beach. They want it signed and, you know, lockable, you know, for that purpose, if they don't want more traffic.
Okay.
And I, to me, I might just say that this is, I mean, they already crossed the bike path, I don't see this as a license to cross that property. I see this as a request to, it was a license to put this, these steps in here to make it safer for them to go up and down the bank.
I guess my hesitancy was if the sign was actually on public property, where the steps were, to eliminate the public being able to go on what's public property would concern me. If these are, if the sign's actually further up on their private, quite clear away from the public property...
There's a fence, they'll have, I mean, there is now an arbor on the side by the house.
Right, I'm not concerned about that side.
So, they put a sign up here, it says private property, they probably have one now, and likewise, if you go up, you know, we wouldn't have a sign that prohibit them from going onto the private property, if they can go up and down the steps. And part of that is, part of the, the top of it is on the public property also.
Right, well, the, what you're saying, Tom Connaughton is saying, is very helpful to me, so I don't have a problem.
You don't have a problem? So, then, you want to make a motion to approve?
Well, we're going to do it.
Well, sorry. That's all right, we have to go to the rest.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is, the next are the three N-Star petitions, and Sam, you held those?
Yeah, the one on Brockton Street is inside the Little Pond Sewer Service Area, and I just wonder whether we want to see this go in before the sewer is put in? I mean, it seems like you're going to have a problem with cutting off service if the street gets dug up. So, you know, I just raise that as a question, I have no problem approving it, but with excavation going on in that area, they may want to wait. That's all.
Well, our town engineer was the, was the hearing officer for these public hearings, and maybe we could ask him if he was cognizant of that or something? Maybe hold that one until next week, which is possible to do?
Okay.
And then get that information from Peter McConerty, because he is the hearing officer for N-Star.
Should I move to continue this one into our next meeting?
Yes, you can make a motion that we continue item 10 to, to next week. Becky?
It just says on the original form here is the engineering recommendation is to approve the request.
Right.
So, they're asking us that, so I would say that they would have all the information.
Well, but Mr. Patterson would like to hold it until the town engineer...
No, I'm actually just trying to avoid a problem.
Trying to avoid a problem.
And if there's a, if they want to go ahead and put it in and have to discontinue service when they put the sewer through, I guess it's imperative.
Well, and that's part of the town project, too, so you'd think they'd probably work together.
Communication is always a problem.
All right, does that solve the problem?
I'll pass it, I will withdraw my...
Okay, all right, then we withdraw the motion then.
I would move approval of articles 1 through 12.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. Very good.
We then have three special events, these are recurring and are recommended. The first is the Trick or Trolle Street on Main Street, Saturday, October 31st, by the Village Association. Just to remind us that we did look at this two weeks ago, when their request was to close the street, and we did not take action at that point. Now, they're requesting actually that we take action, give them some action as to what we want to do. I would recommend that we approve the request for the Trick or Trolle Street without the closing of Main Street.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous.
Next item is the Village Association, the Holiday Stroll, on December 5th, 2015, again, they were requesting the closing of the street from 4:00 to 7:00. I would move approval of the Holiday Stroll without the street closing.
Second.
Any discussion?
The only thing I thought about that is, it's the day before the Christmas parade, and the street is closed at that time anyhow, on the following day, so I thought it was kind of strange to have two days back-to-back in town that were going to be closed, so I agree with Mr. Jones suggesting that we don't allow the street to be closed twice.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. And the last item?
Is the Woods Hole Mayfest. This is May 23rd, 2015, request from the Woods Hole Community Association to use the Woods Hole Ballpark and Taft Playground. I move approval.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, unanimous. I'm going to pass this down for signatures. Okay, next on our agenda is a public hearing, and this relates to chapter 1, Mass General Law, Chapter 138, Section 64, the Boathouse, 88 Scranton Avenue, Seasonal Alcoholic Common Victual License Violation Hearing. So, I would like to read the following announcement. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the provisions of General Laws, Chapter 138, Section 64, which requires that the Board of Selectmen investigate complaints regarding liquor licenses with the witnesses under oath. In order to comply with this statute, all persons intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand. So, is there anyone here who, who are either representing the applicants, or who are the applicants, or who would like to provide any testimony, either for or against any actions that might be proposed by the board, then please stand so that you can be sworn in. I'm going to give you a little time to think about this, because if the time comes and you want to say something, you will not be able to, so this is your chance. Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, will the secretary please note on the record that all persons intending to testify stood and took the oath prior to testimony, so you will need the names of the four, five individuals.
David Trent.
Ian Williams.
John Ozzell.
D O Z C.
Connor Luff.
G O Y N N.
No.
No, you don't need to read it, just background. Just want to take comments from the chiefs.
Right. All right, we're going to begin the hearing. We're going to start with a hearing related to the boathouse, and the Board of Selectmen is a local licensing authority, and in accordance with the general laws, I already read that, are going to conduct this hearing because of reports alleging liquor license violations that occurred at Falmouth Pier 37 Boathouse, 56 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth, as follows: violations of MGL Chapter 148A, 527 CMR 10.17 (1)D, failure to comply with requirements prohibiting overcrowding, and MGL Chapter 148A, 527 CMR 10.13 (2)D, failure to comply with crowd manager requirements on the multiple dates of July 26, 2014, August 16, 2014, and August 30, 2014, in which Falmouth Royal was issued violation citations. Reports concerning the alleged violations may be examined and copied at the office of the Selectmen during normal business hours.
Actually, the violations were for the boathouse.
Pardon me?
The violations were for the boathouse, it says Royal Bar, but that was actually for the boathouse.
Yes, you, thank you, you're right. Okay, so we're really now, this hearing is really only about the boathouse. The second hearing will be for the Royal Bar. Okay, I'm going to ask the Fire Chief, Mark Sullivan, if he would come up and present his findings to the board.
Hi, Mark Sullivan, Fire Chief. The hearing, the issue we have with the boathouse was, we got an anonymous complaint July 7th, and it actually showed a picture, and some of the complaint, the paperwork it had, that they complained about this to numerous people, and they was wondering if something that could be done about the overcrowding and the noise coming from the boathouse. The Fire Department is concerned about fire safety, not so much as about the noise, so we did decide, based on the evidence and the pictures, the picture that came along with showing the amount of people, that we thought it might be wise to do some checks on occupancies. And I directed the fire prevention division of the Fire Department to do some squad checking in some of the facilities in town, I wanted them to be in the boathouse for overcrowding. And on July 26th, they did their first inspection, and that was in conjunction with the Police Department, and we brought together as a, as a, like a task force to check this out. And, I'm sorry, the first one was on July 6th, the inspection was conducted at 11:30 PM, and the observations from the outside indicated there might be an overcrowding problem. So, they did enter the building, and they did check, at that time, and I'm sure they'll talk about this later, the occupancy load was at 154 people, and they've got a head count on that evening of approximately, it's within different areas, one area there was 144, the main dining room area, there was 114, so the boathouse exceeded their total occupancy by 124 persons on the first night. So, the team that did the inspections talked to the owners and decided to issue them, issue non-criminal code violations as far as fire regulations go, and they issued a verbal warning on that evening. The next group, after discussing with the police and the Fire Department, they went out again on August 16th, which is, are people familiar with the date, on the road racing? And they went out at about 11:30 PM, the boathouse, again, outside observations indicated that overcrowding might be a problem, and it's split up into different sections, so that's this, this second evening, they were overcrowded, overcrowded in certain sections. It's split up into sections on the inside, and if you're not familiar with the facility, they also have a deck area, so each one of the facilities is separated into different, different amounts of people that they can have. And on that evening, they were overcrowded, the total head count was 269, which was under the 296. If you noticed earlier, I said the occupancy was 154. They approached the town and made an agreement through with the Building Department to make some changes, and by making those changes, they actually upped their load, upped the occupancy load to that number of 296. But they were still, that evening, they were overcrowded in certain areas, certain areas were overcrowded. For instance, if you're out in the deck, that may be from 100 people, starts to rain, all those people are going to move inside, so then that room would be overcrowded. So, they were overcrowded in certain areas, but not in totality. And they were issued a fine that evening from the Fire Department, non-criminal, for $100. They, we can get into the particulars, I'm not sure how much you want to get into, part of the deal is if you go into a restaurant, and it's a sit-down area, you have so much square foot per person. If you move the chairs and the tables, that increases the square footage, that you can have more people in that area, because you moved the tables aside. One of the agreements to do that, up their loads, they were supposed to move these tables and out of the way, and I guess that didn't happen, this way it should, so that was kind of the reason why we were fined on that night. On August 29th, there was another inspection conducted by both the police and Fire Department. And there's also some requirements about the parking in that facility, I'm not sure if you're familiar with the parking lot when the boat was around there, so they had to bring up the number of parking spaces to go along with the occupancy, and that's a Building Department concern. So, again, total head count on this, the third night, which was August 29th, was a total count of 280. Again, the increase of 296 was, was okay, so there were, some of, again, the tables remained in use outside in the deck area, and in certain areas were, again, overflowed. So, they were under the 296 by 16 people, they shouldn't have increased to the post-10 PM rules, that's, that's what the rules were after, you know, up till 10:00, it's dinner time, then after 10:00, it turns into the night call, that's when they move the tables. They should not have increased, increased to the post-10 PM limits without the additional parking available and the tables removed. So, because of that violation, they were assessed a fine of $500. And that's where we ended as far as...
Just to confirm in your report, in the head count that you're talking about, were only patrons? And I believe the law actually has to do with total head count.
It comes staff and musicians and what, yes.
And your head counts did not include staff and musicians?
I believe they did. I keep looking at Inspector Demello, because he did the actual inspection, so if we need any details, I might ask him to...
In the report I read, I thought it was saying, it said that they did not include staff.
Okay, then deny this, I thought it was... Are there any questions?
Any other questions of the chief? You're going to be here if we have questions later.
Oh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, chief, I did notice, as Selectman Jones pointed out, that in some instances, the report does say this includes staff, and sometimes it didn't, so I think as long as it's differentiated, so that we know exactly what the total count of...
It should count, it should include staff, if it didn't, then that was an error on our part.
Okay.
Because a body is a body, whether it's a musician or an occupancy, because how many people you can have in there.
All right. If there are no questions, then we'll ask Chief Dunn. Good evening.
As Chief Sullivan said, our alcohol compliance officer, Michael Seminole, went out with the Fire Department on these occasions, and I just want to bring to the, to the Selectmen's attention here, you know, through the course of 2014, ran a call log for calls at the boathouse, just to give you an idea, and there were 42 calls for different services, and some of those were just building inspections, but we responded to the boathouse 42 times. But just what Chief Sullivan had said, we were there to assist the Fire Department, and also looking for liquor violations, and at that time, there were none, it was just the overcrowding issues.
So, and how many instances were there reports of overcrowding from the Police Department?
It was, we went each time with, with the Fire Department.
With the Fire Department.
Yeah, the different calls that we were there for ranged from, anywhere from larcenies to threats, to disturbance, to loud music, there was one loud music, building checks, intoxicated people.
So, there are a significant number of calls?
Significant, 42, yes, for 2014. Significant, 42, yes, for 2014.
Right. Okay. Any questions to the chief?
Let's keep going, and we'll come back.
Well, no, because now we're going to ask the.
I guess, the question maybe I'd have for both chiefs is, what kind of response did you get from the staff when these violations were pointed out?
I have to refer back to you on that. According to what I heard from the inspectors that went out, that they, the people were very agreeable, they understood that they, and the boathouse, which we're talking about this evening, is actually taking some steps to try and increase their occupancy. But you can't just go, well, you know, it's road race weekend, so, it's road race weekend, so sorry, it doesn't matter. If your occupancy says, you know, it's 298, it's 298 on Thursday afternoon, as well as Friday of road race weekend. So we can't just make exceptions because they're busy weekends.
Right, I'm concerned the first report that we read is that the, when, on the first visit, on July 3, or I guess July 26, when their, the Fire Department was met at the door, they were told the occupancy was allowed at 350, and that they only had 263 people in the building at the time. When neither one's true. The occupancy is actually much higher than that, and the allowed occupancy was considerably lower than that. And so, I guess when we get to the owner, to ask him the questions about that.
They may be a little better, I mean.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, now, we'll ask the owner, or any other members of the boathouse, that the owner chooses to come up and speak on their behalf. Yes, Attorney Glenn?
Paul Glenn, representing the boathouse, and Conor McLaughlin. Thank you. So I've been representing the Conor and the boathouse for about four years now, and I've seen him mature into, I think, what you'll see soon, is a very qualified general manager of this place. Conor wants to make the presentation himself, if you will, before the board, showing the changes that have been made, okay? The boathouse used to be just a house, and it's been added on to over the years. There were a lot of little rooms in it, until now. There've been a lot of little rooms. Last year, he had to manage eight different occupancies, not just one, not just the total, eight different ones within each room. That's because the fire code provides, they want to prevent people from getting stuck in a particular room. Why not? It, that's just, that's how the building was, so that's what Conor bought into. He knows that, you know, and he knows he made a mistake last year. But the nature of the building made a design for him to fail. You have a crowd at night, and there are eight different capacities. He's watching the one capacity, he knows what that one capacity is. He knows that there are other capacities going on there, but that's just a really hard job to do, manage eight different ones. If you, if you have your family or your group in one room, and then whether it rains or whether you see another group, you walk into that other room, now he's in violation. So I'd just like to point that out to you, how cooperative Conor really was when they did come in, and how he was never over the total capacity. It was always a room. And at the, the last, the last violation, it was the outdoor room that he was in, over total capacity, it was the deck. So, and the police complaints, Conor's been there for a while. In 2012, there were three noise complaints. 2013, championship year for him, no noise complaints, right? Last year, he had one noise complaint. So Conor's able to manage a very loud, a very big, a very big restaurant there, where, you know, young, young working people go at the end of the night, and, and with only one noise complaint. And he's been trying real hard. He's made changes in 2012 to the pan, the menu, to reduce some, to reduce those problems. But the big changes, he wants to explain to you here today, I'd like to put it on. Instead of, he's already pulled the building permit, instead of eight little rooms, he's knocked all those walls down. He's knocked them, he's not saying, Conor's not saying, "We're busy, leave me alone." He's saying, "I'm going to fix it," okay? And he's, he already has built, he already has a building permit and has begun work. He's getting his inspection tomorrow, where he's knocked down these walls, and he's created just two capacities, one for inside and one for outside. That is something that's manageable there, and I can see Conor is very anxious to show you what those changes are to the, to the building, okay, to do that. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. If I can, may I borrow one easel or something that I may be able to display, what we're discussing here?
Is this about last year, or about this upcoming summer?
No, no, I want to stick on what's, first off, what was and what is.
Great.
But most importantly, let's start with what was, so we understand what exactly happened and how it took the ambition. First off, before I begin, again, my name's Conor McLaughlin, I'm the general manager of the boathouse. And I've been there for, this is my sixth year. I'd like to start with the police report and the 42 alleged incidents. I'd like it noted that most of those incidences are area checks, and I employ Brianna Murray and Cody Murray, who are Bob's children. And he stopped by to check on the area, and we really appreciate every single time that there was presence. It always helps as a deterrent to have people leave the area when there's a presence. But some of the area checks, you could, you could see why you'd want to come visit your son or daughter at their place of establishment, to make sure that they're doing well, and it doesn't necessarily mean that there was always an issue. As far as the building's concerned, this is last year. This is the 2014.
Can you carry the microphone and speak into it?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir. I didn't know, I think I'm a little bit bad. So this is the, this is the building, is on, hello?
No, it's, that goes to TV.
Oh, okay. This is the building as it stood in 2014. As you can see, we have a deck occupancy of 97 people. This little room right here is the only access point from the building to the deck, had a capacity of 14. A capacity of 56 here, 39 here, 17 here, 10 here, 10 here, 45 here. When we initially had the first complaint about overcrowding, and it was, when I had the capacity of 150, I was shocked when it was told that, when I was told that I was over capacity, because the building didn't look crowded. I hadn't even begun to do the check, to be honest, because the building didn't look overcrowded. It didn't even come close to looking overcrowded. After I was initiated, I was given the warning, I went to my architects and to my site planning engineers, and said, "What is going on here? Why did the building look so undercrowded, even though it was over capacity?" And they go, "Oh, well, with the square footage of your building, you can actually fit over 300 people in this building." It's not, has nothing to do with the square footage of the building, why your capacity is 150. It had to do with the parking requirements, and with outside factors, that it was at 150, it was never pushed for more. I said, "I got to change that." I went back in front of the town, we, we worked on some of the issues with my architect, with my site planning engineer, we found a formula to fit, we came to an agreement with the building inspector, and we increased the capacity to 296. When, when the, when the check came on 296, we were, we were under capacity, as, as they had stated, in the building. So at this point of entry, there had been less than 296 people. This point is closed off, this point, there are guards here, security here, security. Walk in the parking lot that's looking at this area here to make sure no one gets in.
Excuse me? Could you use dates, so we can follow, when you're doing a count?
So the, the first, the first violation in which I was issued a warning, was, there's no excuse, but at the end of the day, I was unaware, to be perfectly honest, that there was an issue, because the building looked empty. And I found out why later, because it was drastically underutilized. So, that was on July 28. On August 18, when our capacity was now enacted as 296, we had 269 patrons in the building. They say, however, that the, some of the staff wasn't included in the head count, I believe in this one. Also, staff and team was not a head count. We had a DJ performing that night, and there was no way we had 30 staff members working that evening. I've never had 30 staff members working on a given night. There's typically six bartenders, two barbacks, and five to six security guards on any given night. We don't need more than that. So I had controlled this capacity to under our allowed amount. However, there was an issue with the deck being overcrowded. And he came in and issued us a $500 violation, not a $100 violation, for that, for that.
Excuse me? Could you talk about how you had the, what was the implementation of the controls?
So I had a gentleman standing here, who was supposed to be checking the head count of the deck, and there was a gentleman here and here, just observing, making sure everyone was good, and I had another security here. At the time, I, I wasn't, I was aware, but I, I hadn't put enough emphasis on the individual capacities of each room. So when I was told that the deck was over capacity on that, on that time, I, I came in and brought my number one gentleman that I have the most faith in security in, to this position here, in order to count heads going to the deck, to make sure the deck was compliant. Upon that, so we skip forward to the last date, which is August 30. On August 30, they come in, I'm full-hearted, I know that we have everything in place here to have security here. This person here is keeping an accurate head count of the outside deck. A gentleman here with a, with a computer system, checking IDs as they get scanned in, to make sure no underage gets in the building, which I've had for a number of years now. And they, they informed me that this deck has more than, there, there's, I had them form a line here of patrons, just because the deck was, the deck was at capacity, and people needed to stand in line in order to wait to go to the deck. So they were standing cautiously in line, waiting to go out to the deck. This room had more than 14 people in it. So then I was in violation of this room. But I couldn't push them into this room, because then I'd be in violation of this room. So it was very difficult for me to manage the capacities as they stood, because it's hard to get into a fight with someone who wants to see their girlfriend here, and I have to push them into this room here. So here is, was the issue that I was having with, with the capacity last year. It was my first year going to 296 capacity, I did it in the middle of the season. We experienced some growing pains, because as Attorney Glenn had pointed out, this building was built in the 40s as a house, the 40s or 50s, and then it was converted to a restaurant in the early 70s. It's gone through multiple stages of growth, and this year was the first year that we had tried to take it to the next level, quote unquote. So, if I may, flip to what I've done in order to remedy these issues. This is going to go right back in my window, because I know it belongs there, but I have my building permit here, issued by the town, for the upcoming renovations. This will just make a lot more sense than discussing rooms without having an accurate picture of what it means. Thank you, sir. So this year, as you saw, we've already pulled the building permit, and our rough inspection is tomorrow, hopefully, if they're able to see us. And what we decided to do is we went ahead and we removed the walls from that little room that was here, and opened up the flow, so it's all one, now it's all one walking space. We also added a double set of fire aggression doors to the outside here, thus further increasing the safety. Wasn't required, but we wanted to do it. Also, in the front room here, we added an eight-foot barn door that slides open, and now we have two aggressions here, and an eight-foot door open that opens in the middle here. This, we've made substantial renovations to this component to make sure that the safety is there, that we're not going to run into these same problems again with managing crowds in different areas. And now I'm able to form a line going this way, so people can be, you know, so I can control the capacity outside correctly, while having a orderly line waiting for people to go outside and enjoy themselves. That's, more or less, and I'm sure you can see it, but this is, this is the wall that came down right here, and along here. So, that is the predicament I was in as of last year. And the second time they came in, they issued me a fine, it was for $1,000. So at this point, I've, I have incurred $1,500 in penalties, and had several meetings regarding this. And we understand how important it is to get it right, to have the patrons be safe, to have everyone enjoy themselves. And I'll point out again, I only had one noise complaint last year, and zero the year before. We believe in the town, we believe in the concept of business, want to do whatever it takes to make it right.
I just have a question for clarification. You have, under the old plan, you had how many rooms with separate?
Occupancy.
Occupancy limits. And how many will you have with this new plan? How many fewer areas will be?
So last year, it was, it was several, correct? It was one, two, three, four, five, six.
Six. And now, how many rooms will this?
One, two.
Two rooms?
It's all the walls gone.
So now the building, the building commissioner will then determine what the occupancy of each of those rooms can be?
Correct, which we've already had the meeting with the building commissioner, and we've already met with Inspector Demello and the chief to discuss this. And they were agreeing that the removal of those walls would help make it as sufficient as one room.
But not increase the capacity?
No, we're still staying at the 296.
But we're making it a lot easier.
But we want to make sure that it's, that we're not caught in a, I don't want to call it technical, in an issue where a small capacity becomes a bigger problem, in one of the little rooms.
Well, you could, I mean, and one can understand how the customers would go from one room to another, or there would be a huge number of them that would all stay and congregate in one room. I mean, that's possible, and that puts you over the limit. And I can see how that would happen, but at the same time, that is a really critical safety issue as well. Because the more people that are jammed into one room, the less safety there is for all of them. So it would seem to me, and we can get comments from both chiefs, that, that this new arrangement would, would make it a lot easier to be able to determine capacities, and hopefully for you to be able to manage your, your crowd requirements a lot better.
We agree, and we, and we, we didn't anticipate how much of a problem that small room would be going into the new capacity. That's why we decided to remove the walls of it. And any further, again, this isn't hypothetical, this is already done. Our rough inspection's tomorrow. We have invested a lot of time and energy to make sure that we get it right, and we're open to any further suggestions in improving the safety.
Well, do you have a question? Yeah.
I think I am sitting here shocked in thinking that 296 people can all be under one roof with one purpose. And I'm thinking about 296 people that need to be protected, and they're not watching a movie, and they're moving around, and I'm thinking about the cars of 296 people, and I'm thinking about people that live within a half mile of 296 people. And if there's only been one noise complaint, that's what you know. And that's all you need to know. But I think that the issue, that it's legal, and we're allowed this, and we're going to take down some walls, I'm thinking about crowding, I'm thinking about emergencies. I'm going to listen to a little bit more, but it seems as if the expanse of the boathyard, to include that many people, and to include that many people and, and we're agreeing with it on the town side, there would be a violation before you took those walls down. And you had a few violations a couple of years ago. So if you think taking the walls down then allows the, your over compliance, I'm going to listen a little longer, but it's the direction I'm thinking.
All right. What, what we are focused on tonight is actually the overcrowding of last year of the dates mentioned. And I know that what you're presenting to us now is you believe and hope that you have corrected that with the plans. And that's all well and good. And we're glad to see that because it shows that, you know, you're, you're making improvements that will hopefully let you operate a safer business. But we have to stay focused now that we've heard this back on these crowd violations of last, of last year. So that's our focus for tonight is just the crowd violations of last year.
I would like to read, just to say that I did implement a valet service this year. I didn't think it would come up as part of the issue of the, I know it's part of the occupancy, but if it's going to be addressed, I'd be happy to address it, that we have implemented a valet service that will be operational at all times if the boathouse is open to patrons. This has been, again, reviewed and agreed upon by the building commissioner and others in town. And we're as far as the aggression goes of this building, if you look up state code, the amount of aggression we have in this building is good for over 1,500 people. We have more aggression from this building than most other places in town. We have several points of exit. Everything's lit. We even put exterior exit signs up over this section of the bar because we were afraid that people standing here wouldn't be able to notice. It was brought to our attention by, by Inspector DeMello that people standing here may, may not know that there's an exit here if there's a couple bodies in the way. So we installed an eight, six, eight, seven-foot exit, outdoor, the LED exit over the entrance to ensure that patrons have a fast aggression from any point in the building. If you look, we have one, two, three, four from the outside and double door here, out, 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 five from the inside.
Okay, Dan?
I have a few questions. One is, on the very first time the fire department came, the security person said you had an occupancy of 350. And that concerns me that your staff and you had to take responsibility for them knew so poorly what the actual limit was. That's one concern. The next concern is when we, when the town did agree to increase, there were some very strict expectations of things that were going to be done that weren't. The tables were not moved. The parking spaces were not taken care of. There were no requirements to increase to 296. There were stipulations put in place that didn't happen either time. And yet the boathouse still appealed these violations when clearly they had happened. And I'm worried about your word saying, yes, we're going to do it just like last year. You came to the building commissioner and said, yes, we will move the tables and chairs. Yes, we will make the parking available, but you didn't. What's going to, I mean, that's where my concern is.
It's not like they walked in and none of the tables and chairs are moved. There were some tables in the outside deck that were being occupied that I did not forcefully remove people to move the tables and chairs. And that was my fault.
Then why were more people in? Then why were more people allowed? And the rule was to get the increased, the increased occupancy, you had to do those things. And to not do them doesn't give us confidence that you will do anything that's put forward.
I'm not here to wave any responsibility upon myself or my staff to do the right thing, but it's important to note that I have spent countless hours and monetary value trying to ensure that this building is safe and accessible. And I put in two 88 bathrooms that weren't there before. I've done a lot of things to ensure that.
What we're asking that you do is follow the laws that we put forward.
And the gentleman who was, who was at the front door is no longer working for the company. And now there's a protocol that we, that I have to go through a training program for the security personnel.
Can you just talk about that for a minute because now we're getting to the specifics? What is the training program for the personnel and how are you going to implement procedures and training so that there aren't issues this going forward? I'm just curious about the responsibility.
We don't want to go too far astray because we have to deal with the issue of overcrowding. I mean, that's really.
Well, he seems to be taking responsibility, so that was the.
Again, this was all part of a larger scheme, but if I may, can I submit this for your review? Here is the boathouse management plan, which was written by me for staff, for the building inspector in an effort to.
Madam Chairman, could I just say one thing? Connor did write this. I'm the one that handed it to him, but this is written 100% by Connor without any help from me or anybody else that I know of.
So all, I want you to focus on the overcrowding because that's what we're dealing with tonight. We're not dealing with parking or any of the other issues there. We're dealing with the fact that on these certain dates that you were cited for overcrowding.
And I just want to be open and be able to answer the questions that are proposed to me from all angles. But as far as the occupancy goes, all I can say with the utmost confidence is we were under capacity in the entire building by 30 people, but the rooms themselves were not managed appropriately. I take blame for that. I, I tried to remedy it, but the building was as such that in reality, the occupancy should have been not granted at that point until the walls were taken down or had 12 security guys at each threshold in order to manage it. But at this point, I have, it's completely my responsibility and I do not waive the fault of that. However, we were controlling the amount of people in the front door. We were under capacity by 30 people in the building.
That was the first time. The second time was 16 without staff. I'm sure you have close to 12, 14 staff?
Still under.
By two.
But under.
And now I'm concerned that this building management plan talks about capacity of 298, even though this is where.
296, I apologize for the typo, but it's off by two people.
But this is where you're not understanding that, you know, the, to be that close and say, yep, that's fine, even though with that kind of rooms, the chances of you coming anywhere near the capacity of each room is very, very slim when you're that razor thin close to total capacity. I agree, in seven rooms, there's no way you have a chance of meeting the capacity of each room if your total capacity is within one or two people. Physically, it's impossible to do that. And to not acknowledge that you were doing something that was physically impossible, you know, if you really want to follow the rule, you say, I need to be about 40 or 50 people below capacity to be assured that I'm having each individual room be safe.
Well, no, I, I want to mention something. Back in September 12th of 2011.
I do have a question regarding that.
Oh, you, oh, you wanted to ask a question? Then go ahead.
Just out of curiosity, does Gillette Stadium sell 68,000 tickets or do they sell 67,500 to make sure they're 500 under capacity? And the capacity was given and I was trying to control the capacity. I wasn't thinking I needed to be 40 under in an effort to secure my capacity. I was ensuring that I would not exceed my limit. I knew where my threshold was.
Of the entire building, but not of each room? You were not paying attention at all?
I was not paying attention close enough to each individual space. And as you pointed out, it is a very difficult task and became cost prohibitive to have 14 bouncers at every threshold.
If you were going to go up to near capacity? If you didn't go near capacity?
Or at any capacity, because I could have had, I could have had 120 people and they're all standing one room and I'd still be over capacity.
I think you'd notice that and make sure that didn't happen.
Understood, but it's just theoretically possible.
All right, do you have a question?
Yes. It says that you were found in violation and for a non-criminal fire code violation, a hundred dollar offense. The boathouse has appealed the violation and is awaiting a hearing that was scheduled for October 16th, 2014. Would you tell me the result of that?
We were found in violation based on the small, the individual rooms.
Okay. And you appealed that violation. And what, what happened after you appealed that?
Well, no, well, I appealed it because of these transitions we're making and I just tried to truthfully play with the good graces of the gentleman there and say, here's what I'm doing and you understand I wasn't negligent. I wasn't at three times my capacity. I was doing my best to manage the capacity door, but it was failing on a, on a, on a small basis of each individual room. They said, as Ms. Flynn pointed out, that we are dealing with what happened last year. And if you're going to, technically, no matter how you slice it, it was, you know, the capacity is a capacity. And if it says 14, you have 16, then all else falls to the ground and it's 16, not 14. And I understand that and you can't get around that and that is what it is. However, I just want to note that I wasn't grossly over capacity stuffing the building with people.
What did the town hearing officer say to you? What did he tell you at the time of your appeal?
Well, the appeal meeting, I thought, went pretty good until I got the letter in the mail about two weeks later saying that I was found in violation of those.
Okay, I just want to go back to September 12th of 2011. This was also a, a hearing. And it says here that Connor McLaughlin updated the board, because I remember I was the only one from this board who was there that night, updated the board on changes he has made at his establishment, including new accounting software that tracks numbers of patrons and better communicating, communication using two-way radios. He had already provided Selukman with materials detailing these changes. Selukman Murphy commented that the efforts to make the establishment successful have worked. Chief Riallo said the department was pleased with Mr. McLaughlin's actions and introduced Sergeant Lowen, who said that the boathouse has made a remarkable turnaround. Chairman Flynn praised the creative steps that Mr. McLaughlin has taken. Now, tonight, I, I kind of think the same way, that you've taken some very creative steps to correct a really difficult problem. When your capacity is room by room by room, I can, just can understand, you can't keep track of people room by room when they're moving around and having a good time. But is it your opinion that based on this, that you will be able to do as you said back in 2011?
Yes.
That what you are putting in place now should help you correct any future problems with overcrowding? And that theoretically, if you're doing your job, this shouldn't happen again? Is that a fair statement?
That is a fair statement. And we do have the two-way radios enacted as we had promised and we did get the ID tech software, which we were one of the first that you are starting to see other establishments dabble into now. But we were one of, one of the first, if not the first in town, to have that software.
Okay. Does anybody else have anything they would like to add during this? Any other questions for the boathouse of Connor McLaughlin?
I guess trying to go back to what happened last year, but now with a new space, I'm still concerned about that deck getting overcrowded. And you're still saying, well, I was under occupancy. I was under my limit, but that deck is overcrowded. Because that's what, that's really what happened last year is spaces were overcrowded and you were just concerned with the total number. I'm still concerned with the spaces being overcrowded and you're still only concerned about the total number.
No, I, I, I understand where your concern is at.
So how are you going to handle it this year so that?
If you, if you remember in the, in the discussion, that the second time they came out and actually issued me a violation, my deck was at the right capacity. However, the room going to the deck was over capacity because I had a line formed. That won't, that line will not be an issue. It's very easy now to.
I'll take, take the microphone with you.
Sorry. It's, it's very easy to formulate a line going to the deck and have, and have a gentleman standing security here to make sure that this is, now, we don't allow patrons here. Says a security guy here. We don't allow patrons here. So it's one access and it's much easier to control this capacity. And I don't have to worry about 15 people standing in line waiting to go outside that would overcrowd a different section of the room, of the restaurant.
So now is it your expectation that when the capacity limits are set by the, by the building commissioner, that those will be capacities in the two rooms that you're going to be able to control and you won't run into that same problem again? Of having fewer in one room and more in another? Are they going to be set by the entire restaurant? Are they going to be broken up by rooms? Do you have any idea?
From what I understand, the capacity is written as such, there will be by, right here, by, by total occupancy of a building, by state and, and town code, the interior of the building will be one capacity of 190 people within the borders of this. And the exterior here will be 108 people.
So there will be just for the interior of the building and for the decks?
Correct, because all the other walls have been removed.
So then there's, so next year, or this summer rather, when there are inspections, there should be no question about there's too many people in the room or there are too many people on the deck?
Correct.
That it's not a total capacity, but it's divided by two?
There should be two counts.
And two counts.
How many people in the whole building? How many people on the deck?
I think that's very important for fire and.
It makes everyone's job a lot easier too, because as you can imagine, counting 300 heads in a fluid motion from this room to that room to that room becomes very difficult. Whereas I can tell people to stop sitting on the, stop the door and say, okay, we're going to put two security guys here. Firemen are going to do a check of the interior of the entire building.
And which tables get moved to make that amount?
Well, this, as you can see, the, well, the tables are stacked here and they stack along here and here. So these are the, this is the outdoor furniture and then this is the indoor furniture stacks in this corner of the building and right here.
And so to eliminate the problem with not having moved those tables, you have a scheme to, you're saying, well, I couldn't kick you out of the.
Unfortunately, it's going to force me to be the bad guy in some scenarios and tell people that it's 10 o'clock and you, and you have to get up and finish your meal.
Or you tell people at the door they can't come in.
They can't come in. But how do you set a requirement? Is it five people less for every table that's standing there? Where do we, how do we, how do we judge how many, how many people per table?
You go back to 154 and say they don't get the.
So it's 154 unless every table's, so if one table's staying there, it goes back by 140 people?
You know, if you're asking me what law, I would rather.
Correct. I, I just. You can, you can see where I'd rather just be the tough nose and say, I'm sorry, sir, it is 10:30 and all the tables are leaving. It's not, it's not fiscally responsible for me to.
That's fine, but do that.
Stand.
I guess the thing that bothers me is that, I mean, good managers of institutions make sure that their clientele are safe and also the surrounding community are safe as well. And I would much rather see you take that kind of an attitude than some of the excuses I've heard. And that bothers me just a little bit. It's a trust building thing here. But I am concerned about the fact that you're looking at this as a way to make the most money as a business without necessarily looking after the security and safety of your clientele. And, and so, you know, when you talk about some of these, you know, fungible numbers and not laying down the line on people, I think it's pretty clear that you can just simply say, this is a safety issue. I must ask you to move and take that responsibility on and explain to them it's in your best interest.
I will, I will, I will gladly do so. I do want to note it, this did not have to be a double-door aggression and this did not have to be an aggression. It was chosen by me before, before to put that in. And I will, I, again, I need to get a little less soft and friendly in those, in those, in those moments of people wanting to sit down and enjoy themselves and they're in the middle of the moment. I'm going to have to, you know, step up and do the right thing and ask them to, you know, move from the table.
All right. Are there any other comments that we want to make? I think, I think we have enough information. I think it's time to move on, if you're ready to move on.
You should, you should see the final inspection of this by the end of, at the end of this week, beginning of next week, but the rough is tomorrow and it's, again, it's just, it's not something that's a pipe dream. It's already an implementation.
Okay.
I think I have enough information. You have to move to close the hearing?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, the hearing is now closed and the board will deliberate on what action it might wish to take on the matter of overcrowding at the Boathouse Restaurant on the dates mentioned from July 28th through August 30th, 2014, from memory. Okay, board. I think we have some options here that we can take. I think from the, at least from my, from my reading of all of the documents we have here from the police department and the fire department, I don't think there's any question that there was overcrowding. The question sometimes could have occurred with, well, maybe it wasn't. The question sometimes could have occurred with, well, maybe it wasn't total, the, the numbers of people in the rooms totally did not rise to the two hundred and ninety-six count level, but certainly in many instances, there was overcrowding in, in rooms from time to time. And obviously, it's a very difficult thing to manage, and I understand that. How do you tell people who are having a good time and comfortable, well, you have to leave this room down, go to that room, because there's too many people here? But nevertheless, it happened, and...
I think as a finding, it happened three times.
Yes, and it happened three times.
We had, from the fire department, police department, that we had three different violations of the occupancy.
I think the one good thing that I see that comes out of this is that the plan shows that it is now open, and it isn't into all of the small areas, which really was, was one of the main issues. But I still am at the point that the boathouse is allowed to have two hundred and ninety-six people, and I, I think we really have to watch the occupancy there. But I do think those plans were excellent. I think it's much better to have it one large area, and you're not starting to count small room by small room. I, I just think of the safety of the people, the crowded area, and there's a reason that you have, that you have a capacity. There's a reason for that, and it's the safety of the people in there.
Right. Well, that's the whole point, obviously, and it's important to emphasize that, it's the safety of the customers. Sam?
Yeah, I would say that, to your favor, Mr. McLaughlin, is the increase in the size of the exit doors. I mean, we've had some tragic situations where people were jammed in a building when a fire broke out, and people were unable to get out because of the jamming that occurs when crowds panic. And that's a nice, a nice management feature that you've added to this, but I think that is a concern. You know, I know people like to be accommodated, you know, when they're having a good time, eating a meal and what have you, but, you know, these accidents have occurred many too, far too many times, and safety's gotta be the critical feature. You know, your business goals are gonna have to be cut back a little bit, and I think people will understand if you're basically saying, I'm looking out for everybody's safety as the justification for it. So I would say that in behalf of Mr. McLaughlin and his efforts.
Well, I think we need to move to a resolution. I think we've certainly discussed this for the last hour, and...
Is there a way that we can move forward to give a warning with, if it happens again, revocation of license could be a very likely outcome that we can take? Because with, and what I would add is the parenthetical warning is, boy, you better make sure that you're not even close. Because if you're close, and it turns out you were wrong, you know, wrong by two is wrong, is overcrowded, and I would then vote that, you know, in the second time, when they came back, saying, no, actually, we're gonna close the establishment. I mean, to take it that seriously, saying, you know, we better, well, the number may say two ninety-six, we better pretend it says two sixty-six, because we don't want to even come close to risking it.
Well, I think there's no question that based on the testimony of both the fire chief and the police chief, that the licensee is in violation of the building capacity as determined. I mean, there's no question that those violations occur. That was obviously last year. I think Connor McLaughlin has made a huge effort in trying to improve the entire interior. The question is, you're gonna have to make it work, and I'm sure you know that. So it is possible that our motion could be to issue a warning, rather than any, a suspension or any of the other options that are available to us if we chose to do so. And that, and then also to, that warning would include and notify that any further violations of the crowding, particular, well, the crowding, because that's what we're talking about tonight, that we would take up immediately in a, in a new hearing, that we would establish within probably ten days of the violation, and take that up as a, as a, a new issue. So we could do that, with that warning, that any future violations will cause an immediate hearing by this board, and further action taken for that to occur.
Identifying what you're, what you mean by violations, is it just the number of patrons, or are you also including underage drinking?
No, we're only talking about the overcrowding.
Okay.
Exceeding the, the limit of patrons, that's it.
No one has been caught under age.
Excuse me, the board is now in deliberation, your time is, has, has passed.
Total capacity and per room capacity, either of those constitutes a violation.
Well, we haven't seen what the new capacities are, so I think we need to, that, to clarify that, whether it's total capacity, outside capacity, room capacity, we may have to review that again when we get those numbers from the building commissioner.
I have no issue with reviewing them, as the building commissioner says, this is the capacity for this room, this is the capacity for this room.
That's true.
I'm happy to go with that, I don't need to hear that. See what those numbers are.
No, but we need to know it, rather than hear it.
Well, that will be on their permit.
Right, that will be on their permit.
Which they can read, model.
So, would you say it one more time, what you were suggesting?
I guess I would move that we issue a warning to the boathouse, saying that they were found in violation of occupancy, of, of occupancy last summer. We're issuing them a warning, and if there is a future violation of the building capacity, either total capacity or program capacity this summer, we will be holding a subsequent hearing to reconsider or possibly revoke their license.
And that this would be treated as a second offense?
Right.
So that it would not be separate from this particular hearing? If we, if we vote tonight to issue a warning, that warning would be that any future violation of overcrowding or the crowding limit would be considered a second offense, as opposed to a new, a new trend. And that would help us move the process through a lot quicker.
For the manager, have we actually voted to give them the license at this point? We were talking about voting.
No, this is, this is a different...
It's later.
It's actually, I think, on our...
It's on, yeah.
It's later.
Later tonight, okay, fine.
Yeah, this is apart from the granting of a license.
Okay.
This is, yeah, based on last year.
Okay.
So, did you, why don't you, could you formulate that again into a motion?
I move that we issue a warning to the boathouse, that they were in violation three different times of our building capacity bylaws last in the summer 2014, and because of that, we are issuing them a warning that any future violation of the building capacity will be treated as a second offense, and there's a, license will be subject to modification, suspension, or relocation. Second.
All right, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The hearing is, has been closed, and that is the end of the discussion on the boathouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now, we're gonna move on to, what's next?
The Ra Bar.
The Ra Bar. Okay, this hearing is being conducted with the provisions of the general laws, chapter one thirty-eight, section sixty-four, which requires that the board of selectmen investigate complaints regarding liquor licenses with the witnesses under oath. In order to comply with the statutes, all person intending to testify at this hearing shall now stand. Okay, please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear to affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God? Okay, will the secretary please note that all persons intending to testify stood and took an oath, and if you would take a moment to record the names? Thank you. Jennifer, did you get voided now? Okay, failure to comply with requirements prohibiting overcrowding, and Mass General Laws, chapter one forty-eight, A, five twenty-seven, CMR, ten point one-three, parenthesis, two D. Failure to comply with crowd manager requirements on the multiple dates of July twenty-sixth, August sixteenth, and August thirtieth, in which Falmouth Ra Bar was issued violation citations. Reports concerning the elect violations may be examined and copied at this office during normal hours. So we will begin with the testimony from Chief Sullivan.
Before you begin, with this one, we also have two other issues of, under Mass General Laws, chapter one thirty-eight, sentence sixty-nine, sale, delivery, and alcoholic beverage to an intoxicated person.
No, no, that's not ours. No, that was handled by the ABCC.
It was, okay, I'm sorry.
We're just dealing with overcrowding.
Okay. Right.
Okay.
Hi, yeah, just to skip some of the, the scenario is the same as the before, what drove us to start these inspections was an anonymous letter, and we went out to some of the bars and the nightclubs that we thought were worthy of checking, just being familiar with the town and facilities. One of the ones that we did do an inspection at on the, on those three dates, the same as the last one, was at the Falmouth Ra Bar. And on the first inspection, the, the inspection team noticed that the, they did a head count, they noticed it looked like it would be overcrowded, and the limit, and that's, this building is seventy-five. And the Ra Bar, they did a head count in there, and they found it to be a hundred and five people. And the Ra Bar was advised to reduce the number of persons using the inside and the outside bar to the permitted number of seventy-five, which they did. And they all, they were also issued a verbal warning, and this is the first time it turns out to a non-criminal code violation. On that second inspection, on the same, same grouping in August, around the road race weekend, the inspection was conducted, and this time, it looked definitely overcrowded, they did a head count, and they got a number of two hundred and seventy-five people in an occupancy for seventy. So the establishment was issued a non-criminal code violation, they were asked to lower the amount of the occupancy of the building down to the seventy-five. They were issued a hundred dollar fine on the non-criminal code violation. On the August date, the inspection team arrived at around twelve eighteen, and asked the staff member, or, I'm sorry, back in that first one, the staff member stated that I have no idea how many people were, I'm sorry. And if you remember, the, the establishment we spoke at depends on the size and the amount. Certain ones do need a crowd manager, certain ones do not need a crowd manager, and this one does not need a crowd manager because of the number of the occupancy that's permitted there. But the head count in the third evening was a hundred and thirty-four personnel, and the owner was advised to lower it down to seventy-five, which he agreed to do, stating the issue was people were jumping over the back fence. And then the inspection team noticed that they, when they were leaving, in fact, people were jumping over the back fence, but really nothing was being done abroad. So the, the establishment was issued a non-criminal code violation fine and a two hundred and five hundred dollars. And I think that covers it for those three inspections.
Any questions for the chief? Chief Dunn?
Relation to the, the Ra Bar, again, our alcohol compliance officer, Officer Michael Seminole, went out with a fire department all those nights. On the night that there was over two hundred people in the establishment, it was, he used some really good judgment, he felt it was so crowded, he himself did not go into the bar, but he kept an eye on the fire personnel, and his concern for not going in the bar was somebody may grab his gun, it was that crowded, so he didn't go in. Just to give you a little history on there, in 2014, we had twenty-three calls for service. Those calls ranged from two loud music calls, three disturbances, two arrests, and the rest of the building checks. Let me make a clarification on these building checks. When the offices, they're all seem to be around one o'clock in the morning and things like that, we usually, if a cruiser pulls up in front of an establishment, it's just listed as a building check if there's, if there's no disturbance or they weren't called there. So that's the reason for the number of times you see a building check, is it is just there to make sure that everything's flowing correctly, and to hopefully prevent a disturbance, because usually those people see the police, they try to walk the straight line. Any questions?
Okay, the, the owner, Mrs. O'Cardy?
Madam Chairman and members of the board, I'm Bob Amet, I'm a Falmouth attorney, and I'm representing Mr. Richardi, who's next to me, Eddie Richardi. He has been the manager of the Ra Bar, holder of the liquor license, owner of this restaurant operation since it opened in late 2007. This will be his eighth year there, and until now, he has never been called before you like tonight. Now, Chief Dunn provided records of all the police calls which he referred to, beginning in 2008. And I think you would have to conclude reviewing those records that the Ra Bar has operated with a pretty good record up until last year. I won't go through each year, but just as an example, in 2008, there were five calls. One was an alarm that went off in the morning, three were building checks in November, the last one at five thirty in the afternoon referred to a liquor law violation handled by the officer with no report being filed. There were no other calls. In 2009, there was a single liquor license inspection with no violation or incident reported. There were no other calls. 2010, there were two reports of loud music, one in July, one in September, there were no other relevant calls logged. In 2011, there was a call about noise, about a disturbance in August, the noise call was in May, and the party had left the premises by the time the police arrived. The police were called on one occasion also to deal with an intoxicated person, it was after two AM, the establishment would have been closed at that time, and where the person would come from, who knows? There were no other calls about problems. In 2012, there were only two calls of note, both were relative, relative to noise, one in May and one in July. In 2013, there was a disturbance call in October, that person was gone on arrival by the police. There were no other relevant calls. There may have been building checks of that nature that the chief has referred to, but when you go through the list, there may have been an automobile accident nearby, so there were no other relevant calls. It's important to note that not every call reflects badly on the establishment. Sometimes a call is placed by the bar itself to deal with a situation when it's doing the right thing, refusing service, refusing entry, trying to deal with a problem either outside or inside the facility. Now we come to 2014, that's what you're concerned about, the seventh year of operation of the Ra Bar. There was a noise report in May, it was not due to the bar's music, it concerned a crowd dispersing after one in the morning, and there was another noise incident on July nineteenth, and that one did concern music from the bar. But the police reports say that both were quickly resolved. There were liquor violations that have been referred to, and then your notice of tonight's hearing makes references to those. So I'm not certain whether to refer to those, or whether in fact the board is not interested in, in those events, which have been dealt with by the ABCC, and for which a very substantial penalty was levied by the ACC and dealt with. So again, it was in your notice, but the tenor seems to be that that's not what you're interested in tonight, so correct me if I'm wrong about that. Regarding over occupancy, as the... Regarding over occupancy, as the fire chief said, there were three violations of warning and then two violations. And there really isn't any question about it, if the occupancy posted says 75, then that's what's allowed. And this situation is a little bit different than the hearing you just held because it's one open space per restaurant, and yes, there is a, a deck and they are separate spaces. So it's possible that there's an issue and one of the violations probably was only about the deck. Of course, together, there was a violation, but not inside. And because of the problems with access to the deck at times, Mr. Richardi was unaware of it. I'd like to talk a little bit about the posted occupancy. It's 75, as stated. In fact, that figure seems to come from the allowed number of seats in the restaurant and at the bar, including, including in the restaurant's seats, seats on the, on the deck. That is the number of seats approved by the zoning board of appeals. Those are numbers, seats not counting employees, not counting staff. If there was a diner seated for a meal, that would be the number, the number of seats. Mr. Richardi clearly years ago should have distinguished between the number of seats, which is in part based on a number of parking spaces he's arranged to have, and the occupancy for purposes of safety and a liquor license. Again, there is no question that there's a violation if he's over 75. He needs to do something about that. Violate that number, what he can do is try to get it increased. That requires having an architect prepare drawings, doing the calculations based on the layout of the proper area per, per diner or per standing person if the seats could be removed. Just seats that can be placed at tables and at the bar, no people standing at all would be 126 according to an architect's plan we've just obtained. That doesn't account staff and it doesn't count areas of the, of the floor that are for staff. Doesn't include the interior of the bar for staff. If that were the number, there would not be a violation on two of the three occasions. But there was a violation. We're not saying there wasn't. Mistake was made. Whether it was a safety issue per se is, we could talk about, that's really for the building commissioner to determine for the future. The fire department has to be able to rely on what's posted. We are not contesting that, the mistakes were made. But what we intend to do in the future is to see if we can increase that. And once that's been accomplished, then we'll have a new number that we have to comply If seats, if tables were removed, the numbers would be higher, but that's not, last year's 75 violations occurred and they can't be allowed to occur again. I'd note that the capacity of 75 is less than 100, and 100 is the threshold for various crowd management code regulations, so some of those don't apply. The problems in 2014 were not representative of the Raw Bar's first six years, nor we hope of the future. Let me say that with regard to those 23 logs called. Twelve of them were area or building checks. There were only the noise violations, the two of them that I mentioned, and, and the violations on the road race week, and the, so three occasions at which there was over I need to tell you that last year, Mr. Richardi was dealing with severe health issues, his energy level was low, he had major surgery, and maybe as a result, his supervision was less than needed. His health is better and he's going to be joined in the business this year by his son, Michael, who is here. We know you take these issues seriously. You should, you have to. And we know you want every licensee to be aware that violations will be dealt with subject to penalty. Mr. Richardi's been heavily penalized by the ABC for instance, I won't go into how that happened and some mitigating circumstances, but he's paid that penalty. He's also paid fines to the town, they're not big, but towns for the occupancy violation. And he did not appeal those citations. In addition though, this hearing process has, in its impact, been equivalent to a lengthy suspension and an additional severe penalty. But for this renewal hearing, the Raw Bar license could have been issued on April 6th. That's the information I was given by the staff of the town manager's office today. They had planned to open the Raw Bar this season on April 16, the Wednesday before Patriots Day weekend, as has been their past practice. So as of tonight, the Raw Bar has been without its license and closed for 13 days. Were a violation hearing scheduled during a license term, the establishment would operate until the hearing occurred and the suspension if warranted took effect. And the Raw Bar, as I said, has already been without its license for 13 days in addition to the other penalties it's paid. At this time of year, the Raw Bar would be employing 11 people, not counting Mr. Richardi. These employees are suffering, have suffered because of the closure, which Mr. Richardi feels very badly about. He just wants to get back to work and do it correctly. He knows mistakes were made, he takes responsibility, he hasn't previously been before you in all these years for any violations. He's been penalized, we respectfully ask you tonight to renew his license when you get to it later tonight. He's determined not to be in this situation again. We can help him to properly and safely increase the allowed capacity, put the right number, a better number for him on the wall of the establishment. And until then and thereafter, comply with whatever figure that is. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Ed Richardi and I do know Pat from previous years. And as far as the Raw Bar goes, the capacity is kind of low. I saw Connor give his, his increase of capacity and stuff, and we're headed down the same road so we can get a fair amount of people in there without any problems or any situations like that. We did do the crowd control, we, we didn't need to do that, we did it. I've had a restaurant in Hyannis, we, we had 275, 280 people. So all the people that work for me, we make them do the crowd control in all places. We even have it at Sopranos up in Mashpee, I own that, and we have everybody that they're, not so much crowd control there, or their tips program and their tips training, we go through all that. I have Barbara here, she does all that for me in all my restaurants. Last year, I had a kidney issue, it started, and I couldn't do as much as I should have done, and I wasn't there as much as I should have been. So now I'm back again and I'll make sure of these things. I take what I do very seriously. I've been in business in the town of Falmouth for 27 years. I've yet to have a, got an overcrowding complaint, and I ran one establishment for 20 years. Me and Pat know each other from there, we used to have a few noise complaints here and there. And, but I take what I do very seriously. I certainly don't want to endanger people, and I don't want to see anybody get hurt, I don't want to see all that. And I understand the crowding situation, I'm not saying because it's road race weekend or anything else like that, but things sometimes slip away and we just can't have that, and I know that. I try to work with Mark Sullivan, I went and talked to the chief, and the chief of Mashpee, we have a good relationship, him and I are friendly, he had his issues when I had two restaurants in Mashpee, he came to me, we worked together, and we don't have any issues. I'm certainly not here to be standing here now at this time explaining my situation, and I certainly don't want to have you people here listening to this as far as the overcrowding and all that. I, I feel after 27 years, I should be in a better position than being here for that. I was a little upset at some things that had happened, so this year I brought my son Mike in, and Mike's going to work there and he's going to work with us, and we're going to keep things under control until we get the occupancy straightened out. So any questions you have, I'll take them, but I've been doing this a very long time, and I've been in Falmouth a long time.
I just have one question. What is your plan to determine the, the capacity of your restaurant during the course of an evening?
Well, Pat, my plan is probably to do the same thing Connor's doing, I've already talked to Laddio, he's coming down to take a look. We just went through our inspections. So once I have an architect, an architect working on a plan right now, I'm not looking for 296 people, I'm looking for a fair amount in one room and a fair amount on the deck. And we're not, we, we do have entertainment, we're not a nightclub to per se, do we want to do business and make a little extra money? Of course we do. It was a very difficult winter this winter, we all know it down there, there's no making any bones about that, but we certainly want to be safe doing that.
Could you explain the fence area in the back that caused problems this summer?
Well, we put a, we put a fence up, we, there was a shot fence up there, and the Raw Bar was like on a smoke. And we had no idea what goes on around us, and we thought that when, the first time this happened, we were in capacity, you know, because we, we don't have those, when I had the boathouse in the old days, yes, we had the big crowds, but at the Raw Bar, we have a crowd, but it's not the same type of crowd. But what happened is that if the, if the fire department closed the boathouse down for whatever reason, people would leave there, come around the harbor side, climb up the hill and jump over the fence. And, you know, at 11:30, 12 o'clock, we might have, I don't know, 75, I mean, 75, 50 people in there, so we, we weren't even paying attention to it, to be perfectly honest with you, because we never had to deal with that. So now I added another section of fence, but more than likely, I'm going to add another section of fence just to make sure that, and I'll have my, I'm going to put a couple of doormen out there. As far as doormen go, we'll probably increase our staff a little bit because we only had a couple of doormen, and I, this year here, I'll probably put, what, four or five doormen on just to be safe if, what's the capacity has changed.
I understand if the capacity goes over 100, you'll have to follow the crowd management controllers.
Oh yeah, we, we already did all that prior to even, I mean, we, we did that, we're so used to doing all that, we had five restaurants, so we had to do all these things, and, and we complied in every town. I mean, we were in three towns with, with different restaurants, so, you know, I mean, Bonstaple, they started that about three or four years ago with the, you know, the crowd control and the different rooms in the section. I know exactly what Connor's talking about because our old place in Hyannis, we had four different rooms. And he's absolutely right, with four different rooms, it's hard to control the crowd because in any given moment, if it rains outside and you get 30 people outside, well, where are those 30 people? They can't jump off the deck, they got to come inside, and you, if the fire department, the police department come in, you're overcrowded. And it's, it's very understandable. It's, I think it's very difficult now, and everybody wants to be safe, there's no two ways about that, but it's, it's, it's become a very difficult situation for not only the boards, but for the owner of the restaurants, just to manage the people. I mean, it's, it's difficult now, so.
Sue.
Were you working on August 16?
I was there, yes.
Because that, that's a pretty-
That was our biggest violation, yes.
That's four times the capacity, and it's four times the capacity whether or not there's an inspection by a fire department or police department.
Right, we know that.
And you've talked about all of your experience over the years in your many restaurants.
Right.
So I'm wondering what your response is.
As far as that goes, I mean, we're right at the heart of the race. I don't want to tell you how many people we let use the bathrooms all night long over there. Those people come up and you let them in, the bump, the doorman, let them in, let them in, let them in, and you got people coming and going like crazy. I'm not making an excuse for that, but a lot of that's got to do with that. We had, we had said to someone that they should put some bathrooms down there, those portable bathrooms, because there's so many people in that turn right there where we are. It isn't like the boathouse, it's kind of in the back, but we're right up front, so everybody expects.
I think the inspection was around 11 at night though.
Yeah, it was late, there's no doubt about it.
Okay, I wrote some notes down as, as you were talking. When you're talking about the capacity, you're saying inside the building and where else? Where's the, where are the 75 people?
It's the total of the deck and the inside, so it's really very small occupancy is presently permitted, much smaller than you would expect, much less than would be safe. We're confident that the number of just seats, even just for dining, without talking about people standing, can be substantially increased. That's not an excuse, we haven't done it, the sign still says 75, but that's total, inside and outside.
When I drove by this evening, I noticed the picnic tables out on that sloping grass area.
Right.
And what are the purpose for those?
We just have those out there in case people are waiting for dinner, and people sit out there, people that are either walking over to the boats, it's just a place, instead of having everybody, and us pushing them away like that, because sometimes when they miss the boat, first place they run to is we're right there, they, they all come over to us. So now we, we make them wait outside, and we make them wait on those picnic tables. A lot of times, people come by and they sit down there, or they have their lunch down there. It's more of a convenient thing than anything else.
It isn't someone coming in and having their drinks and having them at the picnic tables?
No, 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 no. No. Would be a great idea, but they won't let us do that.
How many restaurants do you own?
We used to own five, we're down to three.
Is there an issue of keeping track of the Raw Bar and what is actually going on there?
No, not at all.
You have people that are competent to count who goes in and who comes out?
Yes.
Or the numbers are continuous?
I am going to make sure of that.
And how many times a night do you do that?
We have a person right at the door checking IDs and how-
How many times a night do you check the number inside?
It's continuous.
Yeah, it's just like-
Continuous.
Yeah. You're supposed to know how many people have gone in, how many have gone out.
We have a clicker going in and a clicker going out.
Do you want to?
That's how we do it.
Okay. Doug?
I'm ready to make a motion to close the hearing unless we have any other questions. Will we close the hearing?
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, the anonymous.
I'd like to make the same motion I made before. I think it's appropriate to acknowledge that there have been violations of occupancy three different times in 2014, and that we would like to issue a warning. And then any further violation of occupancy, and this is still the 75 is the rule until that gets changed, we'll treat it as a second offense and we'll be subject to as immediate hearing as possible to consider revocation or suspension of the license at that point.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, others in favor say aye.
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 Aye opposed, unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're going to take a short recess.